Over the 10-year forecast, which presents serious challenges to our long-term viability as a community and as a city organization. And quickly turn to what we believe may be some solutions for the city to consider primarily on the revenue enhancement side, though we do talk about the measures that have taken place to control our costs to the best of our abilities. As council members and community aware or should be aware, a lot of these control costs are a little bit outside of our control, primarily driven by the CalPERS pension liabilities. And we have made efforts to respond within the abilities that we have. But long-term, we sort of go upside down between our revenues and expenditures. And we need to seek long-term solutions to right that ship and also be able to invest in our infrastructure. So with that, I will turn it over to our finance director, Jen Cowan. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon. This budget study session is the culmination of the two previous conversations we've had and a summary of our 10-year forecast where it looks like we're headed. And then some options for us to consider and hopefully get some direction on council as to priorities so staff can focus their attention and research on the preferred options for the council. So as we start out looking at our 10-year forecast and see that we have a balanced budget proposed for 2020, 1920, with a tiny bit of surplus at the year-end, about $4,000. You'll see as we go through fiscal year 2021 out through 2829, we are in deficit budgets where we have expenditures over revenues in the out-years. It's primarily related to the increased personnel costs. If you kind of follow the personnel line item straight across, included in that, there's no salary increases. Staff is budgeted at one step above where they currently are, so there's a little bit of room for merit raises as staff progress through their classification ranges. And then for part-time hours, we have some increases built in there as minimum wage increasingly increases. Other than that, there's no COLAs or cost of living adjustments included in those personnel projections. It's really related to the pension obligation is the primary factor. We have pretty modest growth for revenues assumed and built in there and similarly fairly modest growth for operating and maintenance costs. We also have some expenditure estimates for transfers, and we have a little bit more detail the next couple of slides that we'll go through. But the important thing to keep in mind looking at this is as our projected deficits grow year in and year out, our emergency reserves will start to dwindle, and we will not have enough cash on hand to offset those deficits. So when we speak to having a structurally imbalanced budget, that's what this forecast would suggest for our future years. And as a side note, we've talked about this before. That's not uncommon. Most California cities, or at least several California cities in the PERS program have this similar challenge and are facing similar difficult choices. A little bit about the details of what is in our forecast, our revenue assumptions. And see, our property tax kind of fluctuates up and down a little bit. I wouldn't necessarily describe this as a presumed recession, but we do have some increases followed by decreases in the out-years. The timing, of course, may vary. Nobody knows for sure when this will happen, but there's some capacity for fluctuation built in there. Similar with our sales tax, the forecast model takes averages and kind of projects them out. So there's some fluctuation built in and a little bit of a decrease when you get to fiscal year '23, '24. Very modest and almost flat TOT and business license. So as you progress through the out-years, you know, this is forecasting, it's a crystal ball, so it won't end up looking like this, but there's some built-in capacity for fluctuations should those occur. Our expenditure assumptions, when we look at those, again, salaries are fairly flat. You'll see they're slightly increased a little bit or changed due to what we have built in for minimum wage increases and employees maxing out in their classification ranges. Same with other benefits. And then the big fluctuation is with pension. The amortization tables that our actuaries use to build our rates off of are called trapezoid amortization tables. And interestingly enough, this kind of looks like it has a trapezoid effect. It goes up, flattens out, and then goes down, flattens out, and then goes up a little bit. So all that means is that our increase will go down by a percentage point, but it's still an increase from the prior year. So keep in mind that these are percentages and not dollar amounts. And then lastly, our transfers. And wanted to include this slide and point out that we have built in the transfer to tourism with the understanding that this year's recommendation was to be revisited in the future years. So it's back up to the previously funded level, about $160,000 to $180,000. We've also added the economic development fund in there that we discussed. And then there is no programmed transfers for capital and for our risk management and compensated leave funds. So those are not included in any of these assumptions going out into the out-years. Then we have also included the 10-year forecast for our harbor fund. We did this because we recognized at the last study session that the harbor department was in particular need of some assistance in maintaining its viability going forward, especially in light of some of the capital needs and infrastructure needs down at the harbor. While this forecast does not show a structural imbalance per se, they actually end up with revenues over expenditures once the self-tier T-Pure loan is paid off in a couple of years. And you'll see that under debt service as it goes away in 2021. However, keep in mind that there are no capital projects included in this forecast. So there is not, there's very limited growth for any kind of operating increases, any kind of salary increases, and you know, barely can maintain what the PERS increases for that So back in September, as part of our efforts at adopting policies and procedures, we adopted a long-term financial viability resolution 0919. And in that resolution, we talked to a long-term structural imbalance in our budget. And if the forecast shows that we have a structural imbalance, we are to come to the council with recommendations on how to bring the budget back into balance within three years. So that's why we've started to have these conversations about revenues. Several of those options will take staff work and time, and we would need to start working on that should you elect to do anything for the ballot or the vote coming up in 2020. But we also want to make sure we take a pause and look back at what we've done so far. The answer to our structural imbalance is most likely some combination of revenue enhancement, expenditure reductions, and unfunded liability paydowns. So it's going to be a potpourri of options, I guess you could say. When we look at what we've done so far, we've defunded the deputy city manager position as a cost savings, underfilled the senior engineer position, consolidated and reorganized our utilities division, resulted in two less FTE positions out there, sought and obtained full funding for SRO positions, released the burden from the city on the cost for that position, prepaid our fire side fund. We annually are paying our annual PERS payment and a lump sum contribution in July, which saves about $50,000 in interest for the city. We have the medical cannabis permits in process estimating about June for those to be awarded. And then the businesses can get going on the reconstruction and get in and operating. The council authorized a fee study update that is coming to council very soon. We're in the final touches of that. Last year, the council authorized the marketing and potential sale of our PG&E credits. So we're still kind of softly advertising those out there for any city that may be interested. And then we've adopted a fiscal emergency plan. So those are the, in the last two years, the steps we've taken so far to help control and control our costs and mitigate our structural imbalances to the extent that we could. The staff report speaks to revenue options. They're organized in kind of three ways. First, we have some smaller revenue options that are under the council authority. These are not going to solve our structural imbalance, but they will help mitigate some of the ongoing, you know, annual cost increases that are less substantial than PERS or dedicated to capital needs in the city. There's RV camping, paid parking options, and then adult-use cannabis dispensaries. For the paid parking options, and let me take a step back, what we're hoping is to go through each of these. We have some general information on all of them, can answer council questions on any of them. But if the council could kind of prioritize or remove any of them from the list and direct what you'd like us to focus our attention on, we can go back, do further research and analysis, and come back with more information on those priorities for the council. And it'll just help us more efficiently use our time by having a priorities list. So for paid parking options, we could analyze options, look at ideas and locations, how much it would cost to implement, what estimated revenues the city could receive, potential for enforcement plans, if any. This could be a benefit for the general fund and/or harbor enterprise fund, depending on where paid parking would be implemented. And this one in particular has already been reviewed by the harbor advisory board. They've made recommendations for the council to consider if you'd wish to pursue this. And our harbor director could speak to those if council's interested in hearing that. For RVing camping, this could be proposed down at the Rock in the parking lot down there and/or other locations throughout the city. We could analyze when it was offered, for instance, if it would be a pilot program, a weekends-only program, weekends once a month, a variety of possibilities there for when it would be offered. We do have about $54,000 in our lower-cost visitor accommodation mitigation fee fund. There's some restrictions on what that could be used for, but there's a likelihood we'd be able to use it for planning or assessing that or possibly implementing if we needed to do, you know, striping for the motorhomes or that kind of thing. And this again could benefit the harbor fund and/or general fund, depending on where it was located. Adult-use cannabis dispensaries, completely unrestricted revenues could be dedicated to capital or operating costs. We could analyze the potential for revenues and recommend a number of permits to issue and a process for administering this. The resolution and ordinance that was, the resolution ballot measure that was passed for tax included adult-use cannabis, so that would already be available for the council. It would just be the permitting process and the locations. Next, we have kind of larger-scale revenue options that would provide more enhanced revenues for the city. These have been categorized into council authority, which you can do on your own versus needing voter approval. So when we think of council authority items that you can do without voter approval, we have seller-lease property. If the council's interested in this, we could bring back a list of the properties that we have, what their market value would be, or their potential for rental income. One-time funds, if it's a sale, obviously, ongoing revenue if we lease those properties. And generally speaking, these would be unrestricted unless council wanted to place some dedicated use on those properties. And then we also have certificates of participation. This is the structure that we are working on to establish for our WIFI loan, similar to bond financing in some regards. You do need to have a dedicated ongoing funding source if you're going to issue COPs. So you would need a tax measure or something like that to pay back the debt service on those. We wouldn't recommend COPs at this time, given the amount of debt we'll be taking on for the WORF and other projects. It doesn't seem like this would be the best solution right now. We have a little bit of a chart here just to kind of summarize. Again, seller property is a one-time funding, as is certificate of participations. Lease property is ongoing. Property sale or lease and COPs can be dedicated for specific purposes. And then the sale property or lease property can be a general purpose as well, meaning it can be used for anything. So revenues requiring voter approval. When we speak of tax measures, we have a general tax and special tax. General taxes are unrestricted. They're a majority vote on a ballot and are placed during a general election unless there's a reason otherwise, such as a fiscal emergency is declared or there's some declaration, then it can be placed on any election. For special tax, they're specific purpose, so they speak directly to, they're going to be expended for streets per se or law enforcement. It's a two-thirds vote by the council, or by the voters, I'm sorry. It's a majority vote. They have to be accounted for in a separate fund, and they can be on either a general or a special election. And we have one of these with our Measure Q Fund. That's a special tax, with the exception that it wasn't a two-thirds vote, it was a general vote. But we do keep account for it in our separate fund and have an advisory committee overseeing that. And again, we have a chart here that kind of highlights each of these as we go through and speak to them. We have assessment districts. Those are protest ballot measures for increases. They're a dollar vote, $1 for one vote, so they're based on the value of the property. They're a special purpose, and they're a direct benefit. So the assessment is based on the benefit received by that parcel, so they're not, it's not a flat assessment. Utility users tax, that's again a ballot measure, can be a majority or two-thirds vote, depending on the ballot language, if it's specific or general. If it's specific, then it's a special purpose. If it's a general, then it's a general purpose and can be used for anything. One thing to note with UUTs, generally speaking, a city that does not already have a UUT are less successful in getting them passed. There's not a high percentage of passage. If you do have a UUT, there's a high rate of an increase to that UUT being passed. So with us not having one, this might be more of a hurdle to overcome in getting one passed. TOT, it's a vote of the people to increase TOT. Again, majority or two-thirds, depending on if it's special or general purpose. Increased sales tax is the same. When we think about our sales tax, one thing to keep in mind, all of the cities in San Luis Obispo County that are not part of the, you know, unincorporated county area have a 7.75% sales tax, which is what we have. 35% of cities in California, that's 169 cities, are at or below that sales tax rate. 65% are higher than that, and that's 316 counties. So just as a little bit of a measure on the sales tax. A parcel tax or community financing district, these are generally flat taxes. They're two-thirds vote based on a ballot measure, and they're for a special purpose. So for instance, a law enforcement parcel tax or something along that line would be dedicated to that purpose. And then we have our GO bonds at the end. That again is a two-thirds ballot measure with a special purpose. We would need a dedicated funding source to pay back those bonds. And we, like COPs, wouldn't recommend that right now, given the variety of other options to consider and the amount of debt we'll have with our WORF financing. So I kept the presentation pretty short so we can have some discussion and answer questions on any of these options for the council. And then if you'd be interested in providing direction to us on items you'd be interested in having more information on, we can return with that.
Jen, thank you so much for the presentation. Scott, thank you for the overview. So the consideration here is basically to provide input on the 10-year plan, but also to look at some direction or discussion with regard to potential revenue opportunities as presented by staff. So first of all, I'll open it up for questions. Anybody want to start us off? Looking to my left, Jeff, council member Heller. Thank you, sir.
I'm always willing to start.
Yes, go ahead.
An outstanding staff report, I've got to tell you. Thank you so much. This is the thing that keeps me awake at night the most. And to have this on the front burner finally, I'm relaxed, and I really appreciate the work you've put into it. The opening statement about a balance of expenses and increased revenues, I think, is important. My vision is that there would be a menu of both mixed together that the community would have input and comment on. This report primarily focuses on revenues. Will there be another meeting talking about expense reduction, or how do you plan to handle that?
So the reason that we have revenues highlighted at this point is, should the council be interested in a sales tax measure or any kind of measure that's put on a ballot? There's a general process to do, community outreach, community surveying, and it takes several months to get through that before ballot language has started to be drafted, and we can meet the deadline to get that on the ballot. So from a timing perspective, this is the most imminent. You're absolutely right that it's ultimately a solution of expenditures and revenues as we engage on the next, I hate to say this, as we haven't even adopted the 1920 budget yet, but as we look to 2021, we need to start planning much earlier for that and having community involvement as we won't have a revenue source in place by that point. And to balance, if we're projecting a $500,000 deficit, there's likely will be expenditure reductions or some magic gift that comes from the air to solve that problem. So expenditures will be coming back, as will be CalPERS paydown options and consideration items.
Okay. Then the other question I have is, we have an outstanding group of professionals on the Citizens Finance Advisory Committee. At what point will we get input from them on this, on these issues? And how will that work?
So council certainly could provide input on that tonight. If we are able to identify some of the revenue options that are most important to the council or most intriguing to the council, staff will go back, do research, come to the council with that information, and then the council could direct that be added to the CFAC work plan. I would keep in mind that right now, we have a pretty full work plan agenda with the WORF being added on there, the budget performance reviews, Measure Q review, and the investment report. And CFAC is one of the committees that has a 3:30 start time and a 6 o'clock hard end time due to the planning commission. So likely something would have to be removed, but we could look and see what that would be.
Okay. That's all the questions I have right now.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Can I just begin by asking some of your assumptions in the expenditures? And I'm looking specifically at chart number five. And can you, and well, let's start with revenue. And just out of curiosity, what was the basis for actually projecting that we would have no increase in sales tax in like '23, '24?
So for sales tax, in the proposed budget, we use our estimates provided by HDL, with the exception of the last, the $98,000 decrease that they just proposed. We kept it similar to the third quarter estimate, understanding that there's some outstanding back payments and other items that are likely going to change that. The forecast model appears to take prior history and take averages over so many years and project out. So I didn't change those averages that were built into it when the model was developed.
So it basically comes from outside of you and your staff? And it may or may not be what actually happens, but...
Correct. And keep in mind, like TOT, for example, I did keep that one fairly flat. It does not include new hotels opening up if we were to gain new hotel rooms and how that might influence the TOT. So there's definite fluctuation that'll occur in here. Our property tax estimates for the 20 years start with the county. They come from the county, and then the model builds them out from there.
Okay. So it's fair to say that your estimates here on revenue are fairly conservative at this point?
Yes. There's no cannabis sales tax built into that as the medical shops open up, and no estimates for our fee study increases.
Right. So it's more likely to be higher, revenues are more likely to be higher than lower, definitely not lower than this. And the expenditures then, you've basically said that you kept salaries flat without any kind of an increase at this point. But you're basing it on current staff, correct?
Correct. And just to clarify, I would caution against saying revenues would never go lower than that, because there isn't a true recession built into these numbers.
I see.
So at some point, there likely will be one, and these would probably go down. Salaries are flat, there's no COLAs built in, only step increases for annual merit.
And could you explain the strange kind of up and then down and then flattening out, what that's about?
That's our pension line item.
Yeah.
Again, those...
Pension line.
Actuarial reports, the actuaries generate what our pension rates are going to be, and they do refer to them as trapezoid tables because they look like a trapezoid in that they go up, they flatten, they go down, flatten, and go back up.
So that's such a big old pattern.
Mm-hmm. And keep in mind, as we said, these are percentages, so it's not that the number's going down, it's just the increase is going.
Exactly. No, I understand. And just getting into some of the options that we're looking at for additional revenues, I know we've had a history of looking at paid parking before. Is there somebody here with a history of, that could possibly explain when we did it and what we found out when we explored it? And just kind of the background on the paid parking?
You have the 2007 Parking Master Plan that evaluated paid parking and suggested that it is a revenue source and an option to move cars around where you want them to be. We've talked a couple of different times. I think I've brought this before council now maybe two or three times for discussion, but not gotten direction to proceed, you know, with implementation of a paid parking solution and what that might look like. What it typically would look like is, we would engage the services of folks that implement these types of systems, and then they would come forward and give us an evaluation, projected revenues associated with it, what it would look like to pay for parking enforcement and those types of things. They usually have that all built into their sort of model, if you will. We haven't done that. I have done that in other places that I work, but we've not done that yet here.
Okay. And on the possibility of leasing or selling land, any land we own, do we have an actual inventory so we know exactly? Are we talking about a lot of properties or a few properties, or approximately what are we looking at?
A handful of properties.
A handful of...
Council looked at this four years ago, and we received direction to look at marketing and selling two pieces of property from the list that we brought to council, the Coral Avenue parcel, and then the parcel next to Lemos. Oh, one more, Mendora, which was sold, a residential lot that the city had acquired in a tax lien sale. But there's a handful of other properties scattered about the city, not a huge amount.
Except for Marketplace Plaza.
Market Plaza, yes.
Yeah, right.
Yes.
Yeah. So that is some, we could ask for additional information on that to come back and evaluate that option. And are we currently renting any facilities? Do we know?
Market Plaza.
Yes.
Restaurant properties being rented. And then the, there's a rental house next to Public Services Building that is on the market. I don't believe it's being rented right at the moment. And then we, outside of the city limits, we own several parcels around our well site... around our well sites, and we rent one of those to an adjoining property owner who does some agricultural practices on there. Those are the ones that I know of.
Okay. All right. And with respect to sales tax, my recollection is that when we did put the ballot measure on in 2000, I think it was 2006, is that correct, we actually hired somebody to help us do that. Is that, does anybody have a history of that, what it takes to really get a sales tax measure actually passed?
Yeah. From my experience doing a TOT increase in Santa Cruz, 2011, '12, we went up a percentage point. And you definitely want to hire somebody to do polling, you know, a valid poll, which includes phone calls to a certain amount of residents to get an aggregate total that is representative of the community, and those are about $25 to $30,000. And typically, you want to have a community board that, or ad hoc committee that kind of represents the community broadly, to help review what the opportunities are, what this could help fund. It's a pretty much all hands on deck approach, if you want to be successful, from my experience.
Okay. And just out of curiosity, since our Measure Q actually specifies public safety and streets and storm drains, and yet it was a general tax increase, how did we manage that, do you know?
So the ballot language for Measure Q did not specify storm drains, streets, public works. The council, some of the materials that went out for advertising included that, but the language itself did not on the ballot. So the council, in trying to keep with the spirit of what the marketing language was, passed a resolution saying that it would be used for storm drain streets and public safety.
Okay. So almost after the fact?
You could still, the council could still rescind that resolution and pass a new one, and technically could be used for any general purpose.
All right. And do we know if any other cities in San Luis Obispo County are considering sales tax increase?
Assume all of them are considering tax measures for 2020. Whether it's TOT, or sales, or parcel, it's hard to know. But everybody's in the same boat when it comes to CalPERS.
Right. No, I understand that. I know that, yeah. And on TOT, my understanding is that we have the highest TOT rate in the county. Is that correct?
When you account for the T-Bid assessment, the county assessment, and TOT were the highest by one point.
Okay. Thank you. Those are all my questions. Thanks.
Thank you. Marlis, Red. To you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And thanks for bringing us these options to look at. The trapezoid graph that takes PERS out to FY '28, is there some point at which our PERS obligation will go down?
Our obligation would likely go down, presuming that the fund earns the 7.25% that they're expected to. The trapezoid table that you see does not assume a lower discount rate, as PERS has been talking about. So as they change that, our unfunded liability is going to keep growing. But as we pay it, should nothing else change, it would start to come down. I think we max out our highest contribution in 2032 or 2030, and then we should start seeing lower payments after that.
And are there tactics that we can employ to reduce our payments, such as prepayments?
There are. When we, I think when we did our mid-year update, or of the tenure forecast, we had kind of a laundry list of those as well, with these revenue options. We're going to bring that back and have a more detailed conversation about what those options are. Again, we felt that the timing in this was more imperative to have this conversation first. You can do a fresh start with PERS, which is, you know, taking your 30-year mortgage and reducing it to 20 or 15 years. You can make extra contributions annually. There is a variety of things we could do, if we had funds available.
All right. Regarding the RV camping, do we have any feeling for how much additional staff time would be required for such things as taking reservations, dealing with the money, trash, and that kind of stuff? But I'm just wondering if that has a real net value?
I'm gonna, I mean, those are the types of things we would probably, we'd do more research on if council was interested. But I know the Harvard Department has done some preliminary discussion with that, and is, their HAB is looking at it, so maybe the Harvard Director can respond.
Yeah, Councilwoman Davis, I don't have a hard number as of yet. It's still a little exploratory what we're looking at. I think it does, we're looking at potentially like eight to 12 sites scattered around the waterfront, depending on occupancy. It does have a net, we believe it has a net positive revenue flow, even with management and enforcement, it's really fairly minimal, because complete dry, what we'd be proposing would be completely dry camping sites, meaning no hookups, no complications, just pure parking spot, really. So you're doing essentially what we're doing at the Launch Ramp parking lot, is just making sure people have paid. But again, it's still preliminary, but even on a relatively small scale, it appears to be a net revenue generator.
Okay. And former Mayor Irons suggested that we might look at the park that's over by the wastewater treatment plant. We're currently leasing that to an operator. And I would just like to throw that, add that to the mix for future discussion, if we follow that. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Don?
Well, thank you, Jen, for the report on, I was wondering, in terms of trying to conquer multiple of these methods of revenue generation, if staff feels like we can take on multiple things at once, given that we've cut staff and seem to be short-staffed on many issues?
It's hard to answer that without hearing maybe what some of the preferences are. So, for example, if the council was interested in a sales tax and paid parking, it's likely two different departments working on those, so we could do both. If it was paid parking and camping and TOT and sales tax, you know, that might be too much. So it's really going to depend on what you prioritize. If we could maybe talk about what you are most interested in, and then, and see what our capacity is to deal with those. There's also specific instruction, as I would be interested in camping, but definitely not at The Rock, as there are other, other locations. You know, those are the types of things we'd like to hear now, so we don't spend a lot of time analyzing something you're not interested in.
And then on the COLAs and the capital projects that aren't built in, does that mean that we're planning on not negotiating any new COLAs, at least through 2029, just the step increases?
It would mean, it means that as we go to the table for negotiations, there is nothing currently incorporated into, into the forecast. Now, whether or not that's realistic, it's, you know, but as, as agencies throughout the state are facing these PERS challenges, we're likely to see no COLAs, or even furloughs potentially in the out years. So if we did add them in there, it would just make that bottom line, it would inflate that even more.
And then these tenure projections obviously would change if we were able to add revenue sources, and we would see some of those, the capital projects and the COLAs specifically, we might see that change a little bit.
Correct. So our revenue policy that we updated, and we talked about in our first or second budget study session, new revenues are not to be used for ongoing expenses for the first 24 months. So those would likely go towards capital needs for the first two years, but then would be available if they prove to be stable and ongoing for salary or other ongoing operating expenses.
And do we know on paid parking, what kind of revenues this has generated in other communities of similar size in our county, or how successful it's been?
Well, I mean, successful, you can look at a couple of different examples, right? You have the Pismo Beach example, they're basically using surface lots. I was there when the program was created, and worked on it quite a bit. And it basically pays for itself, and there's some generation beyond it for maintenance, and to cover the cost of enforcement. I think the employee, at least when I was there, I think we had seven part-time parking enforcement folks, and then a parking manager. And then you go all the way up to City of San Luis. I mean, they're getting ready to start building another 400 space parking structure, with a cost of about $30 million. You know, they're generating enough revenue to fund the build of those structures, and seem to be quite successful. So, yeah, you can put programs in place that are self-sustaining and generate, you know, money beyond what it is just to keep the program going, certainly.
And on the RV camping, you mentioned The Rock and other locations. What are the, like, what are, I heard you say down by the ramp, but, and along the waterfront, but where are we, where were you thinking?
The Rock, the, not Coleman Park per se, but the little parking lot between Coleman and the basketball courts, Front Street parking lot, or Triangle parking lot, Launch Ramp parking lot, that area as well. And something they're looking at is potentially not just pure RV camping, but allowing folks that trailer boats, that want to bring their RVs and camp in the parking lot, and launch their boats and use their boats and camp at the same time, instead of having to schlep both of them back and forth to the campground, back and forth, so.
Are people already doing that, and we would simply be charging, or this would be opening up for, you know, a whole new group of folks that would be coming?
There's a limited amount of that that occurs, simply because sometimes folks come late, leave early, and it's just hard to police. Or they're gone, you know, because we're not around at night, we can't tell if they're there at night or not, and you see an RV parked with an empty trailer, and the boat's gone. Okay, well, they've paid their thing, we don't know what they're doing. So there is a limited amount of people that come in and do it, I'm sure, now, but I think it would definitely, especially with like a good salmon season we're having now, that really starts to bring in folks from out of town. And they'd like nothing better than the convenience to be able to just park right there and not have to go back and forth. But it's scattered along the waterfront, fairly small, I won't say inconspicuous, but out of the way, sort of hidey holes to put them into, is what we'd be looking at.
And then on the, on the sale of property, what, what happens to that money? Like, is it reinvested somehow? Is it just like a one-time sale, one-time spending of money, or?
That would, that would really depend on council direction. Typically, if you sell a piece of property, and you go through the process to do that, which is declaring it sort of frivolous, and there's a process in the government code for it, it is a one-time revenue source. So you could dedicate that to a capital project, you could dedicate that to a PERS pay-down, put it in a reserve fund, really whatever you want to do. If you lease that property, you then have ongoing revenue to do something with.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Jen, thank you again for your work. Appreciate it very much. Thank you for the good news. Couple, three questions, couple, five questions, maybe. Does it make sense, a couple of five questions? Correct myself there. In your opinion, what's, what's the magnitude of net increase in bottom line that the city needs, on average, in the next three years? And I know you don't like to give out numbers, but, but what magnitude are we talking about in terms of bottom line needs, revenues minus expenses, in terms of increases for the city? Are we talking about hundreds of thousands, or are we talking about millions, or tens of thousands in your estimation?
So the forecast would indicate you're talking a million or more. And keep in mind, that does not have capital projects included in there. So anything beyond, just to get us out of, into a structurally balanced budget and incorporating capital, it's a multiple millions.
So a magnitude of an increase, and I'll just say the bottom line of the general fund, in terms of one or $2 million would be a sustaining number to keep what we've got, but not address capital needs for the future that have been unfunded for a long period of time, and would not address the, the other impending issues for enterprise funds, if we threw those into that as well?
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay. Does the assumption in the tenure plan cause for CalPERS to remain at the current discount rate?
It assumes that CalPERS will go down to 7%.
Will go down to 7, but not anything below that throughout the period. And when does that occur? What year does that occur? 2021. Okay, great. Would you consider this a best case, worst case, or most likely case scenario, if you look at scenario planning and doing tenure plans? Is this based upon the assumptions that you've made currently with where we are, your best case guess of where we're going to be, or is this like a worst case scenario?
So I can assure you that when we get to 2029, the numbers on here will not be what we're experiencing. It's too far out to be, you know, accurate to the penny. I think that there are very modest and conservative revenue projections in here. My hope would be that they will come in higher than are here. But again, there's no built-in recession, so there's room for capacity to kind of absorb some of that, I think. I think our personnel and our operating expenditures are pretty modest and conservative as well. There's not a lot of room for cuts without reducing service levels. They're fairly basic and bare bones at this point.
Okay. In looking at just, just some of the individual items with regard to COPs, is it true that you, you must have other revenue streams to sustain those if one went out and got a certificate of participation?
Yes. So you would need, for instance, a sales tax measure, or something that would support that. The advantage of a COP is you have the money upfront to do a big project, should you want to, or pay down PERS. But you still need to have that dedicated source to make the payments back.
So it would really include an additional item on the list in order to do a COP, obviously?
Yes, it has to be married to something else.
Okay. Is, do we know if SLOCal is considering an increase potential in TOT marketing this coming year, and what that is?
Yeah, I think their, their board may have already approved, or they're considering approving a 0.5% increase. So they already assessed 1% across the county, and they're on a five-year cycle of approval, and they're seeking a 10-year approval.
So if we looked at TOT increases, that would even put us much higher, if that did indeed get implemented, that other, that other half percent?
That's correct.
That'd be correct? Okay. Jen, why does the GFOA not consider general obligation bonds a best practice? And not that I'm advocating for them, but I would agree with that, but I just wondered why?
They're, they're just generally considered risky with the market fluctuations, particularly if you're looking at paying down PERS. As interest rates change, it doesn't, it's not the most, it's not the preferred method. It's not to say other cities haven't done it, but it's not the safest and most risk adverse method.
In looking at the CIP projects that we looked at, I guess, a couple meetings ago, or last meeting, the storm drain issue and unfunded capital improvements there were rather significant, and there's no funding source for that. Have we considered, or do you know anything about a storm drain, or storm water enterprise fund system that might be implemented as, as a consideration, much like the Water and Sewer Fund?
You can't, I don't believe we can establish a new enterprise fund for storm drains. Rob's going to add in on that.
Not without going through a process. So we could establish a new fee, which would fund this enterprise fund, but it would fall under Prop 218, and it's not, doesn't fall under the exemptions sewer, water, and garbage fall under. So it would be an affirmative vote, rather than a protest vote.
Okay. So there'd be a process in order to fund that? That's most likely what we would have to do. Well, I'll save that, that's not a question, that's a comment. Thank you. Appreciate that. And again, just want to be sure, you did not include a recession in any of the tenure planning assumptions, is that correct? I think I heard you say that.
That's correct. There's a slight decrease in the sales tax, but it's like 1%, so it's not a true recession, or a long sustained recession.
And then just one question with regard to the Harbor Fund, realizing that we have significant unfunded capital issues associated with that, and most likely, the current revenue streams from the revenues that we derive from the Harbor Fund... streams from the revenues that we derive from the Harbor Fund will not allow us to address those. Are there opportunities to look at a Harbor District that would allow for an assessment that could possibly assist in that? And what does that look like if indeed there is a possibility for that?
I'll let the Harbor Director add on, but that would be, you know, under assessment districts, certainly something we could look at if, if council directs that as a priority for us.
Yes, Mayor, I think that does fall under the category that Jennifer just pointed out, assessment district. The HAB has dabbled with that as well. There's several potential paths, two of which are in the Harbors and the Navigation Code. State law establishes port districts and harbor districts, that's what Port San Luis is, they're Port San Luis Harbor District. Number of harbors down the coast are that, or another special district that could be organized under your standard special district kind of law or organization, so those are two possibilities. The devil is in the details on how those would be set up, kind of overlying or underlying the City of Morro Bay, it's yet to be seen how that would play out, but there's potential paths there as well.
Okay. Last question. When does our emergency financial plan get tripped? What are the criteria that cause us to begin to implement that?
So, in the plan, there are five triggers for when the plan is tripped, if you will. If there's a natural disaster, and that is when the expenditures, expenditures are estimated to exceed $50,000. If there's a natural disaster, a human-caused disaster, state takeaways of local revenues, large unexpected costs, i.e. PERS lowers the discount rate, or an economic downturn, and that is defined as two consecutive quarters of declining revenues in two of the three major revenue sources of sales tax, TOT, and property tax. And those are tied to the quarterly reviews.
And I'm sorry, I should have refreshed my memory on the policy that, that could be tripped with any one of those occurring, like the Calpers issue is now?
It's triggered when one or more of the following.
One or more of the following. Okay. Thank you so much, I appreciate your answers to that. With that, I'll see, is there any follow-up questions that may have been triggered with any other questions? Yeah, Don, go ahead.
I know that parcel taxes are often used by school districts, and I know our school district is facing the STIRS issue. Have you heard anything about the school, the school district possibly going out for a parcel tax, or would that come into consideration if the city wanted to go out for a parcel tax?
I have not heard. If there's interest in that, we could certainly look into it and come back.
If, if council wanted to go out for one, though, would the two agencies be in communication, or how does that work?
I think it would be reasonable to expect that you would want to know if the school's going to have one as well, so we'd certainly look into that and bring that information back to you if that was one of the items that you're interested in.
Thanks. So, I'll bring it back for unclosed questions off, and staff is looking for guidance on, and direction on, and I know that there's not complete information with regard to all of these assumptions, and that probably you have many more questions with regard to not only the financial impact of each of them, but also what they entail. But if there are individual items, and I'll let each of you comment, that you don't think we should consider, and those that you do, it would be appropriate at this time to go ahead and offer input, so.
May I make a suggestion?
Indeed.
What if we just go through this list one at a time and just decide whether or not we want to pursue it?
Certainly could do it that way, I'm, I'm fine with that, yeah, with a head nod, and then I'll allow for summary comments if somebody would like to, to make those. Is that from a process standpoint?
Okay.
Okay? Good? All right. So, first item under, excuse me, the right page here? Yep?
I'm looking at this.
Yeah, I'll, same thing here.
Okay.
Right. So, under, I'm just looking at the staff report under revenue options, the smaller options, paid parking, I'll just look for any inputs on paid parking at this time as something that you would like further information, not implement it, but is that something you would like to see further information with regard to?
Yes.
Looks like there's yeses for that. The RV camping issue, potential for capping either at The Rock or at various locations within the city?
No.
No.
I'll make it easy, I'm a no. So.
I'm, I'm interested only from the standpoint that it would be an additional service that the city could offer, but I'm already outvoted, so.
Well, I, I would just add, part of my reason for saying that is that I definitely would not like to see it at The Rock, and I think it's, we're competing with people that already offer it, and that we do have a lot of that already in our city, so that was my rationale.
Yeah.
The, the only piece of that that I would be interested in is when we do, we do have large sports competitions that come to the high school, and I have seen folks parked along the, I'm losing the name of the road, Highway 41 becomes a task at our road, thank you. And when there are large competitions, the parking lots there fill up, and then we do have RVs parked along the sides of those roads, and so I'd be interested in what that, you know, what that looks like, is that a paid parking option or something we just allow?
Yeah, I think I would call that paid parking, myself.
Yeah. Okay. I'm just getting kind of direction here generally, staff, you tell me when you want me to stop for clarification, I think you're maybe getting the drift of this. Adult-use cannabis dispensaries continuing to look at?
I believe we already said we would. We want to have some experience with the medical marijuana dispensaries, so we decided to let them get up and running and then reconsider later in the year, but we did agree to do that, I believe.
And again, this is just looking at further analysis and bringing back information, not an absolute yea or nay, so that, yeah, I just wanted to make sure it's like.
So, I guess I'm a yes.
So, Red?
Absolutely. But we do, I agree with Marla, we do need to have some experience with it, but it's obviously a moneymaker in Grover Beach, and I, I think it's definitely something we need to follow up.
Don?
I'm a yes. I'm, I'd actually rather see it sooner than later, I think. Given the timeframe for medical, I think it's important to get moving on the, at least exploring recreational.
As would I, so. And then there is a number, there are a number of items with regard to council authority that have to do with other issues, sale or lease of potential property, looking, bringing back information again on what properties, what value, what we might attain?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I think we're all in favor of that.
Yes, I prefer lease if possible, but.
I think I'd like, just like to see a list of what we own and what we currently lease and how much we're currently making, and, and then we could make an assessment.
So, further exploration of that.
Yes.
COPs, I'll start with that one. I am opposed to COPs for, for a number of reasons. Primarily, it requires a revenue fund that must be identified in order to sustain the debt service, and, and I just do not think it would be something that would be viable for us, just, that's my personal opinion. So, I'm not interested in, in that.
I'm a no, too.
Yes, we're, we're not looking for an infusion of capital, we're looking for ongoing revenue, so.
No.
No, okay. Great, that, these would be revenue options subject to voter approval. Let me start with number one, the assessment districts. Consideration of assessment districts, are you interested in more information coming back with regard to that?
I am with respect to the Harbor Fund. Agreed.
I am with respect to the Harbor Fund and possibly, I don't know if this makes sense at all, but an assessment district for the Embarcadero or Morro Bay Boulevard, is that, is that something that could be considered or looked at? Just a thought.
Could be, yeah.
I think when we're talking about the Embarcadero, it is primarily related to the Harbor Fund, but you're talking about both sides of.
Talking about both sides of the street, yeah.
Okay.
And I would support the, for the Harbor Fund, the consideration of a district that might allow us to fund capital with that. Okay? UUT, I'll start on that. I am not in favor of UUTs, I just personally believe they're too difficult to get cities to get behind currently unless you already have one, as Jen said, so I would, I would personally not support that. Further information regarding UUTs? I'll open it up to anybody else on that.
I'm a no.
I, I agree, I, I think we've already done enough increasing our utility payments.
Yeah, me too.
Agreed.
Okay. Increased TOT considerations, further information on that?
No, I don't think at this point.
I'd like to see what happens with SLOCal and all of that first.
Right.
Yeah, I, I would wait until we are in much more dire need.
Yeah, I would agree. I think you have consensus there, not interested in that at this time. Increased sales tax potentially, not necessarily special and/or general, but just an increase in, in sales tax consideration, more information about that?
I think it needs to be looked at.
I think every city in the county is considering this.
Yeah. I think you're seeing heads nod significantly for that.
I would, I would especially like to get information about how we did it successfully with Measure Q, so that we better understand how, how we achieve that, so, in addition to how much and whatnot.
Yeah, the process for going about it, and also the magnitude of what a sales tax increase would bring.
Right.
And I'd like to lay up the land in terms of what the other cities, more, more specifics on what the other cities in the county are doing.
Parcel tax, I would be in favor of looking at the possibility of parcel tax. It's, in my mind, it's a small increment that could be assessed, not based upon value, but a single assessment could be very beneficial and, and provide significant dollars, so I'd be, I'd like to see further information with regard to that process, I don't know.
Agreed.
Reed?
I would too, but. I'm not sure that I wouldn't like to know what some of the other options are, not just a flat tax on everybody, but I know there are other methods of assessing a parcel tax, and I guess I would at least like to know what those are.
And I very much think we need to be in communication with the other agencies on this that are able to do parcel taxes as well. I think there's other considerations that those agencies are facing as well.
Good. Okay. And then last is the general obligation bond. I'm, I'm against that, taking on debt like that.
I'm a no.
It's not a best practice.
Agreed.
Personally, I just, okay? So, let me just, Mr. Collins and Ms. Callaway, are we, are we good with regard to what you're looking for from us?
So, let me summarize and see if I have what I think I heard is your priorities for us to kind of focus on. Paid parking would be a priority, still interested in adult-use cannabis, but is a lower priority until later on, so we're not going to focus on that necessarily in this first go-around at bringing back additional information. Sale or lease of property, at least a list of the properties and what their value is, would be a priority. I think those two items, unless the city manager wants to correct me, are probably doable. And then focus on assessment districts for the harbor in some form, specifically for down there, and then sales tax. There's also some interest in parcel tax, but it sounded like maybe that's a little lower of a priority if we can't get to all three of those.
I, oh, I don't know if it's a lower priority, but just like more information with regard to that, I guess. And, and also other agencies that might be considering that, I think was the input, yeah?
Okay.
Okay. Good?
I, I think we're good.
Good. Yes.
I'd like, I'd like, your question, Mr. Mayor, about the, you know, how many millions do we really need here to? I think that's really a key question that needs to be answered, and I don't know if that's something that staff can come up with, or if it's something that we need to look at, but, but I started making a list of things of our capital needs, and I got kind of like taken aback, so I think at some point in this process, we need to look at, you know, what's a real number, not just to meet our goal for structural sustainability, but, you know, reasonable amount of improvement, so.
Appreciate that, and, and you also previously had asked a question about process, which I appreciated, and, and the considerations for at least this year in terms of the, the budget will come back to council, of course, at our regular meeting for approval, so any further inputs or summaries with regard to this year's budget will be made at that time for consideration. And then these issues will be looked at and evaluated over the next few months, and I think we all agree time is of the essence and the magnitude is significant. I, I might just summarize for the public, this is, isn't just another year of trying to balance a budget that's slightly out of whack. This fundamentally is a structural deficit that continues and multiplies over the next 10 years significantly. One, one could say that, and blame it primarily on Calpers, and that would be a true statement if you look at the magnitude of it. However, there are a number of issues that historically the city has struggled with that contribute to our current problems, the, the lack of the availability of adequate funds to fund a full capital budget to meet the needs of the community, not only with regard to the general fund, but also previously the Water and Sewer Fund, which now have been corrected, but also the Harbor Fund, which is, you know, a real, real big problem. And then if you look at the 10-year history, and if you haven't had a chance publicly to look at our annual financial report, the CAFR, we call it, C-A-F-R, there is a 10-year history of finances in there, and it shows you historically where we were 10 years ago, and if, and there are a couple of interesting facts there just to point out. If you look at the number of full-time equivalents in the city, 10 years ago, we had 104, the proposed budget were about 97.5, so it's not like incrementally the city has grown with regard to the number of employees dramatically, but the complexity of the organization has grown significantly, so staff is doing more with fewer human resources, and they should be applauded for that. Also, if you look at revenue increases over 10 years, basically, the sales taxes have been flat for the last four years, and if you look at a 10-year history, the, the magnitude of increase is only 7%. That's not sustainable when you look at a CPI on the average of 2.5 to 3.5%, depending upon which year you look at. If you look at property taxes, the picture is even worse, the, the 10-year increase is only 5.9%. 10 years ago to now, it's only gone up 5.9%. Again, that's not, not sustainable as a city. And if you look at TOT, there were great gains made 10 years ago for about five or six years, but again, in the last four or so years, it has, the curve has flattened out, and we're not seeing the increases in TOT that we did with the magnitude that occurred four or five years ago, and those are primarily the three main funding sources that the city has. And so, we not only, in my opinion, have to grow revenues with our existing economy, which is tourism, but we need to continue to look at economic diversification, and, and that means, you know, what else can we do to get and bring new revenues into the city? So, this is, this is a serious deficit that we're looking at, and immediate action, I think we all agree, needs to be taken and, and looked at very seriously. We need the participation, participation of the public in this, we invite you to come out and give input, public comment, we certainly would appreciate any information you would bring on ideas and how to rectify the situation that we're, we're facing. Bottom line is, we need to maintain public safety and public services at the current level, and that's what we're struggling to do. And so with that, if there are any other closing comments, I would.
I would just like to commend staff for bringing this to us at this point in time because we need to start early, and, and I appreciate that, it gives us a head start, we can see what's going to happen, and, and we're going to have time to deal with it, so, thank you very much.
Any other closing comments?
Comments in the audience?
We took public comment in the beginning, but if you'd like to come up, I'd, I'd open it up for a minute.
Yeah, thank you very much, Bill Bowes, a resident of Morro Bay for the last 16 years. Mr. Mayor, your comment was very good about getting the public to go ahead and participate in coming up with ideas, you know, wonderful ideas here, but I cannot imagine that with the residents of this community, we may not have some other ideas we have not considered. Simple things like.
Simple things like, what are we going to do with sewage treatment plant when it moves? Maybe that property could be marketed in combination with the property where we have the power plant and have a Realtor or some person that's in property management working on that. What are we going to do about wind farms? Good likelihood that this may be the choice that's selected. Trident already has given us $250,000. I don't know the strings that are attached to that, but there may be another way we could go ahead and market and sell to someone besides Trident. They could take the risk that it is going to end up here and pay us so much per year. But I would recommend that the council consider establishing a, another committee, an outside committee, that would just meet to generate ideas. Maybe one of you could chair it or get someone out of the community to go chair it and come up with ideas of how to raise money. I think the plan that Jennifer and Scott and the city staff put together certainly explains the problem, and it's good to get the public to understand it and also participate in what the solution is. When they participate, they're going to find out. A lot of the things that are, the ones that you're considering are probably, have to be considered also, but they may have an idea that we haven't considered as yet, so.
That's great. Thank you, Bill. Appreciate that. Anybody else like, I'll leave it open for public comment? If not, I'll close public, public comment. Thank you. One more. Welcome, Nick.
Good evening. My name's Nick Andre. I'm speaking today on behalf of Natural Healing Center. I just wanted to just chime in real quickly on the adult-use cannabis stuff. So we're one of the applicants for a medical dispensary, retail license here in Morro Bay, and we operate a dispensary down in Grover Beach, and I just wanted to show you our sales graph. These little two tiny things down here, while still significant, are the medical sales. And we saw the sales more than quadruple as soon as Grover Beach went adult use, and then you can see the, you know, consistent and significant growth ever since. And what we've actually seen is kind of contrary to what I thought would happen. So we went from medical to adult use, and when that happened, the sales of medical products actually skyrocketed, while the percentage of medical patients coming through with a medical card plummeted, right? And on the surface of it, doesn't really make sense, but what happened is that there's a significant portion of the population that doesn't want to get an official medical card because they feel like they're doing something wrong, right? There's still a little bit of stigma around it. As soon as it went adult use and anyone that's 21 or older could come in, they all came into the dispensary and are now getting treatment essentially from cannabis-based products that are improving their quality of life. So at the same time, we saw explosion in growth for the sales that obviously provided more tax revenue to the city of Grover Beach, but we're actually selling more medical products and doing more benefit to people with health problems when the adult use went into effect, even though those medical patients with official medical cards decreased. So I would definitely urge the council to consider that as something to allow whoever has issued the medical permits be allowed to also sell adult use sooner rather than later, just because, you know, twofold, revenue and the benefit to the community. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Nick. Appreciate that. Any other public comment? Seeing none, I will close public comment. Again, thank you, staff, for your presentation. Thank you, council, for your input, and we will adjourn back at 5:30 for our regular city council meeting. Have a good evening.